Time being seven oh two, I call to order the Franklin School Committee meeting. Meetings are recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel nine, Verizon Channel twenty-nine, as well as recorded by Franklin Matters. And at the conclusion of our meeting, we will be adjourning to executive session and will not be returning to open meeting. Tonight, we are very honored to welcome kindergarten, first, and second grade students from Lincoln Street K-2 Elementary as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for the very first time. This marks a special and exciting moment for our Lincoln Street K-2 community. Please have their principal, assistant principal come on up and introduce these wonderful kids.
Sure, so along with Mr. Duffy and their teachers, please join me in welcoming Scarlett Decato is a kindergartner in Mrs. Ford's class, Sophia Dungus is a first grader in Mrs. Cahill's class, Lila Florist is a first grader in Mrs. Colodney's class, Olivia Decato is a second grader in Mrs. Papadopoulos's class, and two students who couldn't be here with us tonight, but we wanted to mention, Colin Mahoney is a kindergartner in Mrs. Cook's class, and Tyler O'Connor is a second grader in Mrs. Lyons' class.
Now during the first weeks of school, students participated in community circles with Mrs. B. Savage and Mr. Duffy where they reflected on the most exciting moments of the year so far and discussed the K-2 Lincoln School Read-A-Loud, All Our Neighbors. When talking with the students here with us this evening, they shared that some of the highlights from school so far, including S.T. math, music, eating in the cafeteria, riding the bus, exploring GeoBlocks in math, learning about graphing, spending time with friends, and making new ones. Together, students and staff have engaged in conversations about what makes a good neighbor. It is amazing to hear their thoughtful and insightful comments about how we can be good neighbors to our classmates and others in our school community. Students share that good neighbors are helpful, patient, kind, respectful, caring, and always there to lend a helping hand to others. Your principals and teachers couldn't agree more. These ideas will help lead the way for our K-2 community to begin talking about more of our school's core values. Together with their parents, we are so proud of our Lincoln Street students. At this time, you can please all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Go away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Also, Lincoln Street administrators also wanted to extend a sincere thank you to the parents and students here this evening and those who couldn't be here as they have come together to serve on the PCC Board this year for our school. Your work is greatly appreciated. Thank you all so much. We should keep tally of how many times S.T. math and G.G. depend on these meetings. As is customary, we'll pause for a moment. Review of agenda, agenda look, okay, everybody? Payment bills taken care of, payroll, Vice Chair McNeil?
Payroll's all set.
All right, FHS student rep.
Hi, my name is Callie Joyce. I'm the president of the class of 2027, and I'm going to be giving you an overview of what the high school's been doing. So freshmen have class elections October eighth and ninth. Sophomores don't have any updates. Juniors have the prom upcoming in May at the new July atrium, which we are very excited about. And then seniors have a senior project meeting in the auditoriums. Homecoming is on October 25th, and the homecoming game is October 24th, and we play Bishop-Fian. Upcoming in the summer of 2026, there's a trip to France and the United Kingdom, and school pictures are October 28th and 29th during English period.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, as for clubs, clubs have recently started up at the high school, and the club tour will be taking place on October 7th in order to allow students to look around and see what extracurriculars they could possibly enjoy for this upcoming year.
Thank you both very much. Any kind of questions or comments from the committee?
How many did the tour is going on France, do you?
I'm pretty sure it's a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
And you're liking to be back in school?
Yes.
Also a good start?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Head on out if you want to. Thank you. All right, and superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. We have a few announcements tonight to share. The first is, on September 11th, we held, the district held its first early release day, providing educators with dedicated time for professional learning. The session supported our second strategic objective, building coherent systems and structures, and included topics such as I-R-E-D diagnostic assessment, professional learning communities, or PLC, planning, co-teaching implementation, and safety care de-escalation training. Traffic update, as we discussed in our opening meeting this year, we have continued to make adjustments to our arrival dismissal procedures and improve traffic flow and safety. We thank the community for their patience and grace as we continue to move through that particular process. We did provide information that we shared, we put, we projected last meeting up on the screen. We've cleaned it up, made it more accessible with the same data to provide to families. That can be found on the transportation website. It's posted there now on the page. It basically has a charted graph, line graph of information around the times for the arrivals and dismissals, along with an average time for dismissals particularly for each of the schools, so that you can see that data where it stands today. We thank once again for your continued patience and cooperation as we look to have a safe, smooth arrival and dismissal process for our students. Regarding open houses, the open houses have begun and have been tremendously successful by my view and from many of the feedback, much of the feedback that I've received, it's offered families the opportunity to connect with their teachers and experience the energy within the classrooms firsthand. We have heard a lot from families saying, you know, I just needed to put eyes on the actual physical space in which my child is learning in, meet the teacher, but I feel like those were the pieces of the puzzle that we were eager to have happen, so we were excited to have those opportunities. So we look forward, there are some remaining open houses. The middle school is hosting theirs next Thursday, October 9th, and the ECDC at Oak and Pond Street will do theirs during the month of October as well. We're in our fifth week of the school year, and our buildings, our school buildings are already vibrant and exciting places to be. The teachers are spending their calm and professional time carefully analyzing assessment results, planning for their tiered supports for students to try to meet the needs of the learners that they have in front of them this year. Excuse me. Intervention blocks are now underway to provide targeted assistance to help students grow in a variety of areas. Meanwhile, in the classrooms, as I said, the teachers have done an excellent job just creating just really solid, high-energy, positive learning environments for our students across the board. And the students reading, writing, engaging in meaningful learning across all of the courses and content areas, it's been really inspiring to see these school communities come together with many new educators working together with new neighbors, new colleagues in their grade levels, new colleagues in their, on their teams, and with a focus this year of really starting enthusiastically and welcoming the students in. So this has been great. An update regarding the Franklin Educational Foundation, if you remember that legacy fund, we have an update. I'm going to kick it over to Ms. Malati, who has done a lot of work behind the scenes to make those transfers and then build out that system as we discussed, and I'll kick it over to you now, Jonah.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. With the FEF dissolution, the Franklin Education Foundation dissolution, and the transfer of its remaining funds, we have created a dedicated page within the district website. It is called FEF Legacy Program. This page is housed under the Teaching and Learning Department. And we also created a non-line payment portal to accept donations for the FEF Legacy Program. We will continue to support the mission of the FEF, and this mission includes fostering innovation, supporting creative learning programs, enhancing student services, and enriching the school community. The Unipay donation link is now available under the FEF Legacy Program page, and it's also on the Business and Finance page of the website. We, the page went live this evening, so we are still working, so if you see anything that doesn't look accurate, or just shoot us an email and make some edits. That's it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So just to reiterate, the Franklin Public Schools website, if you go into the Teaching and Learning in the Department section, you will see it listed there on the left-hand column, so this is two clicks from the main site. We always think about how many clicks do you have to borrow down, and it's just clicking into that site, and you can see the information. It includes the history of the foundation, the impact. We've included the awards, the funding that's been totally given during their time. We highlight the Legacy Program with some of the key dates within their, how this came to be transferred into a legacy-type program versus the FEF, and there's ways for folks to sponsor and donate, which is included as Ms. Malati said. And finally, what will be more information is, as these grants are awarded, we will be not only posting that online, but presenting that to school committee so that there is some attention and just, as we had said, be really intentional about the spirit in which these funds would be used, so that it can be celebrated, but also be really transparent as well. So it's built out as a structure, and I think you've done a great work to get the framework down and carry forth the work and the spirit of that work, and I think we'll only see this improve as we move forward. I'll just conclude with my report, and then we'll open it up to any questions that you have, as we normally do. I'm excited to share with the Franklin community that we have been awarded two educational earmarks under the Fair Share Supplemental Budget. The Governor Healey Supplemental Budget, signed on June 24th, 2025, invests in education and transportation across the Commonwealth, with funding directed towards projects that support students at every level. The first earmark is $75,000, which will supplement the replacement of a specialized transportation van. This funding enables us to continue updating our aging fleet, ensuring that the students who require these services have access to safe and reliable transportation. Special thanks goes to State Representative Jeff Roy for his advocacy in securing these important funds to support us. The second earmark is for $100,000, and will support the first phase of improvements within our school courtyards, transforming them into outdoor learning spaces and engaging spaces for our students. These redesigned areas will enhance the interior spaces within the school footprint that we have at two of our schools that have courtyards, to create flexible, safe, and inspiring environments for students. And a special thanks goes to State Senator Rebecca Roush for her advocacy in securing these important funds for us as well. And the details for this can be found on the state's website under the Fair Share Supplemental Budget, if you search that and you look up educational earmarks, you can find more information on those awards. So we're deeply grateful for this recognition and support, and we thank our legislators and community partners for their continued advocacy for the Franklin Public Schools in ensuring that that happens. Final announcement, I'd like to also thank the Town of Franklin, our town administrator, Jamie Helen, who helped to bridge the $100,000 earmark for the learning environments outdoor, but also for the M.I.I.A. school safety grants, where our, the Franklin Public Schools submitted a proposal for additional two-way radios in our schools. The proposal was awarded in the amount of $9,945. These two-way radios help support a safe learning environment for students, staff, and ensure quick and efficient communication throughout the day in the event of an emergency. So those are some really positive updates on funding we've received in the form of grants, and we're happy to answer any questions on our report tonight. Thank you.
Wonderful, a lot of great news. Thank you very much. We'll start down here.
Great news, Lucas. Is there any update on the positions we had open, like mathematics teacher, English teacher we had, who opens like, is there any update on that?
Staffing update. I can, I do not have one prepared for you for this, this meeting, but we can certainly do that and get you an update. The positions are posted, I could look up in fairly short time, but we do still have some openings posted, some ESP positions, and we have continued to try to hire, so what we can do is I can provide you with an update at a future meeting, or I can email you directly too as well with that.
Is there any resumes coming in or no?
Resumes coming in. We are seeing resumes, we're screening, we're trying to hire and try to have our full allotment of staff. Some positions are still open, and we're still waiting to see if people will, will come and join our team. I think at this time of the year, it's definitely harder to try to recruit at this time of the year, but we are making every effort, posting, tapping shoulders. If you know of anyone, please, if that's a public outreach, if you know of anyone, please visit the Franklin Public Schools website, and you can be directed to them.
That's all, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no questions. This is good news, thanks to Rep. Roy, Rebecca Roush, like, this is great, anything helps.
Thank you.
And to your point, like, I'm hearing from middle school parents specifically, like, they like whisper, they're like, it's going so well, like, you know, like, and I'm like, I know, and I'm like, I know, I know, but like, it's like, so, great job, you know, because we're in transition, I know, it's been tough.
I think what we planned for has been working. It's what we don't plan for, I think, that sometimes gets, is more challenging, right? I think those are things that we acknowledge, we're humbled to acknowledge that, you know, we put the best plan we could forward, but there's certainly, we'll continue to look to improve as we go.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Culture just went down, Principal Williams. Sorry.
It's a home shaking.
First of all, it's very exciting that we have the Franklin Education Foundation Fund, yeah, just up and running with this, yeah, I'm taking a look at the website now of the Legacy Program, yeah. Yeah, very excited we have this up and running. Yeah, as a board member of the FEF for the past couple of years, which is why I recuse myself from all these votes, just in case anyone was wondering. Yeah, as a board member, just, it's been a wonderful organization to be a part of, great to see, and there's just such a long legacy of nearly thirty years of this, of this organization in town, just really supporting innovation for our public school system. It's great to see that it'll be living on in a new way that people can donate to, and the legacy and the spirit will be continued in our public school. So, you know, thank you, Lucas, Jonah, everyone that helped with this transition and like really getting this up and running. Thank you to Roberta Trahan and Karlucci, and really everyone else on the FEF Board over these past few years that helped to transition this, transition out with closing down the FEF, but then also getting this legacy fund up and running. So yeah, it's really exciting that this will be living on in Franklin Public Schools. So, yeah, great, great to see. And then, thank you to Representative Roy and Senator Roush as well for those earmarks, that's fantastic. And thank you to anyone who voted for the Fair Share Amendment, because you're seeing, seeing the votes right here at work, supporting directly our public education. So, yeah, we'll see what that bears in future supplemental budgets in the years to come. So, thank you.
Just to echo Dave's comment, great job on the website. I think this is just a great way to evolve and keep the spirit alive around this program, and I also do love the aspect of allowing folks to be able to donate and help continue to support, because we do know the way that we help our community is by all pitching in some way, shape, or form. As far as getting this out, I know you mentioned this here, I'm hoping if we can make sure that the principals can get this in their newsletters, PCs are kind of sharing this with the families as well, just to keep the spirit alive and see how do we get funds to continue and just have this grow. But I love the transparency around this and just the ease for folks that are, that want to know about this, they can just find out really easily. As far as everything else, glad to hear that the school year's going great. I think people thought doom and gloom, but we have really great leadership, as we can see, that have been really putting a lot of thought and energy into this and really trying to get ahead of things as much as we can. So we'll continue on with the way it is and just kind of improve as we go. Thank you.
No direct questions, appreciate the feedback. Just want to, you know, encourage families as we continue to kind of go through all the, you know, the growing pains, and I think as we've established, we're navigating them, I think, pretty effectively, to continue to reach out with the information, any questions you have, any concerns, you know, that's, I think, the best way for us to be able to continue to improve and grow through this process. So as things do come up, please feel free to reach out to any of the school committee members or the administration to make sure that things are being addressed appropriately. Just, again, asking folks to stay engaged, had a lot of engagement over the summer, right at the beginning of the year, and as we continue on and continue to see how things have evolved, it would be great to make sure that we're doing it right, or if there are any concerns that we do have that coming to the fore, so that we can actually do something about it and try and address it. Thank you.
Just one question related to the $100,000 earmark. Does that funding completely build out those two courtyards to where you hope they'll be, or does it get them to a usable point, like midway point?
I did ask for more. I did advocate for a lot more. I, if you look at the earmarks and how they were distributed, it's, it's, it makes sense, but I swung for the fences and wanted, like, this is what it would cost to build out the project. I will say $100,000, when I think about particularly like that middle school courtyard, which is a bit of a concrete kind of area, you know, it's a larger school, we knew that with funding challenges, that this, this earmark, the spirit of this was to be one-time funds to be applied for some project, and we had the transportation earmark for the special education van, so it made sense as we were looking at the reorganization. This was, this was, I put in for this eight months ago probably, and I've just been waiting, waiting to hear, and finally had some good news to share, and it just came through five hours ago.
Oh, amazing.
So I, I put through, and at the time, I was also in the thick of my, my A, my Advanced Learning Environments Planner accreditation, and this was a good use of funding to try to, you know, build out learning spaces. So will it cover the full amount of a project? No, we have two courtyards at our schools. We have one at Lincoln Street, and we have the middle school courtyard. The amount I asked for was to cover both. They were interior spaces that were part of those particular school designs, and that's how I worded the grant. What I envisioned is really looking at designing, how can we at least get these spaces to be, like, build the foundation, like, really set them up to be able to be used, and then add in pieces as we go with other future grants or other opportunities as we, as we move along. So I think we need to get them reestablished and look at, I'm thinking about floor and, and like, sail shades and try to create better shading, because it's just like an open sun, sun bleached area, to try to create an environment where you can go out there and engage in learning, and then we can add in pieces. So without getting into too much now, I do see, I envision sharing more in detail and information as we move forward with any project, but we are going to certainly take our time and do this correct, and I appreciate it. I may have to pick your brain on some of the work you've been engaged in recently, so.
Love that, yeah, absolutely. I thought that's probably what your answer was going to be, but, you know, having talked to a lot of the teachers over at Lincoln about, you know, kind of how they could envision that space and the ways that they're excited to potentially use it down the line, it's exciting to see that getting started, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And, yeah, just want to echo my colleagues, big thanks to Representative Roy and Senator Roush for, for these earmarks. Really excited to see where it's going to go to, and I know especially when it comes to the replacement van. That's a perennial issue that, it's nice to finally get ahead of it.
Great work.
And for all the work that went into the FEF website too. You know, I think just about a number of us immediately kind of went to the page and was scoping it out. It looks fantastic. I love that we're including all of the history behind it, and that there's that direct donation as well. You know, I had a friend, part of the Franklin Fathers Group, and kind of reached out and was like, all right, I'm just kind of learning about this now, and what exactly, you know, what happened with the FEF, the fact that it has that history, and also kind of how can we donate, and it's, I was doing it right here, quick little click, and for folks, you know, at home, so kind of go and donate and continue on with that legacy, which is just terrific. And so for all the board members, Vice Chair McNeil as well, thank you considerably for all the work that you did to kind of transition us into this, you know, going from where the FEF was, and then kind of looking around to say how can it continue on with that legacy, you were instrumental in that. And, you know, I'm glad we were able to kind of get it done now, given that a certain someone chose not to continue on with us very much longer. But still, I'm glad that we're able to, to have this up and live and running before your last meeting here on the school committee. So thank you very much, Vice Chair McNeil, for all the work that you went in to this And one last thing, just when we talk about the open house, Lucas, just a quick, as a parent, you know, we really discussed the wind blocks came up a whole bunch, and this is at the high school level of what I need, and it's an incredible program. I love it. As a, as a parent, I love it, and talking to my kid about all the opportunities that they're able to kind of go and embark on, you know, either kind of seeing the teachers, just doing some, you know, kind of prepping for, for a project or a test with some of their, like, you know, colleagues, classmates, or I think one teacher was offering to kind of walk around the outside, and just while they're talking about some of the lessons that they're learning right now. There's just some really cool and exciting things, so I'm really glad to see that program kind of get off the ground, and I'm excited, where am I going to?
Couldn't agree more with all the comments. Thank you all for your comments, your questions. You know, we, we are excited about the direction we're moving, you know, we want to be, we want to just provide and offer the best possible experience for kids, and, you know, many of us, our own children are in these hallways in these schools. So, you know, we want to just optimize our resources, advocate for them, and make sure that we're delivering on the best education we can. I don't say that as a gimmick or like a standard line, it really, and I know it's shared among my team, that we, we all mean that, and, and so thank you. And once again, we, we try to get creative, we look for ways outside of the operating budget to try to make things happen, and the only, last thing I would mention is, in the FEF Legacy, there's also a financial report, so Ms. Malati has put the financials, and they're available for the transparency for everyone to see, and there's the history, which is really interesting, because I look back in time to some of the folks on that list. If you look, you can see the history of what was awarded, so you can get the kind of idea of what types of things were, were in the spirit of FEF, and we're looking to continue that. So without over talking, I would just say thank you, and we're excited about many of those things.
All right. You went on, I guess presentation's none, so we'll go discussion, action items.
I basically presented verbally a few times here, but so, so you have one discussion, action item tonight. It's a recommendation for the approval of student clubs and activities as discussed. In your packet, you'll notice it says that per your policy, JJFG, the disposition of student accounts, it says that for accounts that have been inactive for three or more years with no receipts, so no transactions, they basically have been dormant, we close them as part of our procedure so that they don't stay out there and live openly. So you'll notice that Ms. Malati has put together that account. What I wanted to mention was the closure and transfer of those inactive accounts. It's put because at the same time, high school clubs are, and middle school clubs are being discussed in form, so I don't want to confuse the public. It's a very good question that I received from one of the school committee members around that, and just the specificity, so I don't want to create confusion. This is a procedural vote for inactive clubs that have not been in create confusion. This is a procedural vote for inactive clubs that have not been in, in operation for over three years. Next meeting, we anticipate having an update on the clubs and activities that will be running, but that's separate. That's like student environment, what's running this year after school for kids, and what will that look like? This is about the accounting for inactive clubs that have not had active accounts. So just to be clear on what you're voting on, you're not voting to end a club for a student that's currently in it. So I just didn't want to set you up for that, that perception or optics. You can blame Dave McNeil. He's on his way out. Anyway, so without further ado, I'll, I'll open it up. I recommend approval of student clubs and activities as discussed.
Is there a motion as discussed?
Motion to approve the student clubs activities as discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, questions?
I just want to point out that Aaron also is ditching us, because the names came out.
I would never blame Aaron for that.
It's all redates.
I'm one person who will basically mark my four.
I was disheartened, so.
Thank you.
So the one question I would have would be the total amount that we're looking to transfer here.
French NHS, it's $81.26. Let's see the next club. And the other two clubs, Photography and Graphic Design has $137.83. And Model Congress has $39.60. So all of those three funds combined are going to be transferred into the school-wide student activity account, and it will support all the student activity clubs.
Okay.
At the high school.
Okay, so the funds all stay with the clubs?
Yes.
Total comes out to 258.69 for those paying attention at home. Just want to make sure that we're being transparent. I know we have all the documentation, but folks don't always actually see that. So 259s and 69 cents are going to be transferred into the other clubs that are currently active. These are just three clubs that have been inactive since at least 2022. I think one of them has been inactive since 2020. So it's, it's been a little bit. It's not like we're waiting just one year. So, thank you.
Good, good clarify.
The other question, do we know if there are any other clubs that might be coming our way down the road in the next couple of years, or is this kind of care for?
These clubs we know have hit the, over the three-year mark. I don't know that we can anticipate, like, new clubs that might come online?
Well, not necessarily new clubs, but clubs that are inactive, but maybe are at the two-year mark is today.
I can get that list for you.
Cool. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. No other questions. Vote, comment, or motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, discussion, only items, none? Headed into Information Matters. Budget, no.
No updates at this time.
How about policy?
No updates at this time. First needs in October.
Community relations.
Yep. So this past Saturday, we did have the Harvest Festival. We had a really, well, a beautiful day for those that were around. I, hopefully, we continue to have these beautiful days for these, these festivals. Really great turnout. Thanks, everybody, for supporting and coming out there. Thought it was a really good, good time. Oh, and then we do have our next newsletter coming out on October 2nd, which I can't believe it's already October. So yeah, so that's, that's the next thing.
And any more magnets?
You know what? No. I buy them Vista Print, and last time I bought 5,000, not 5,000, sorry, 500. And I had extra. This time I was like, all right, I'm going to go a little bit more conservative, and it was like 250, and they all went. So I got to see if there's like a, give me like a 350, 400 deal or something. But no, unfortunately, we are out.
Those are always such a hot commodity. And just for the folks at home, too, maybe just got that magnet for the first time at the Harvest Festival. That's, those are always designed by Franklin High School students, and it's always a, it's super exciting to see the submissions and what they kind of come up with. But, all right, so we are fortunately counting those.
Yeah.
All right. And how about SWAC?
SWAC is not here.
Oh. And mental health, will be?
There's news tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
No updates just yet.
All right, fantastic. And there's one thing, too, just with the MAS C, that typically, you know, what, MAS C, Master Association of School Committee, they have their meeting in October, oh, no, I'm sorry. And so in order to next meeting, we'll vote on a number of like MAS C resolutions. And we can also vote and submit a delegate from the school committee, if there's individuals going down there, down on the Cape, to, to kind of go basically pass forward any of the resolutions that we have. If you're already enrolled in the MAS C conference, or just maybe want to go on down there, just let me know if you want to serve as the MAS C delegate, the new liaison. All right. Then on to consent agenda.
I recommend approval of the minutes from your September 9, 2025 school committee meeting as detailed. I recommend, recommend the acceptance of $500, of $500 from Linda Walsh for supplemental supplies, curriculum materials as detailed.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as detailed?
Move to approve the consent agenda as detailed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? All right. Seeing none, vote, comment, or motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, terrific. Citizens comments. Are there any citizens, an audience, or a person who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda and follow to the committee's purview?
Good evening. Steve Sherlock, 13 Magnolia Drive, Community Information Director for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio. It's been a little bit busy the last eight days or so. Folks should be aware, although sometimes that's not always the case. There is a biennial election coming up November 4th. Per the town clerk, the ballots are out to print. They'll be arriving back October 6th, which that's next week. So sometime next week, they'll actually get into the mail, so people will be able to start voting by, by mail. October 17th is the first in-person voting day. So the reason I've been busy is thanks to the coordination with a dozen candidates. A dozen candidate interviews have been conducted as of today. Three have been published, two are ready to publish tomorrow, and the process is just rolling along. The videos are posting to Franklin Matters. They're going to be up on YouTube. We'll follow shortly behind with the audio, so it'll go out through the podcast channel. At this point, I'm probably not going to do a separate transcript, because if anybody's really looked at YouTube, as the audios go to YouTube, YouTube also provides a transcript. And the benefit there versus the one I do manually is you can click specifically on the text and it'll automatically take you to the audio on the video itself. So I will probably put out some additional instructions that if people haven't really navigated the YouTube to find the transcript and how to get there, I'll put that out there in lieu of actually doing the transcript, because I think respectfully, they're doing it far quicker and far easier than I would be able to do it. So 12 down, six at least to go, some more to be scheduled. We may end, we'll certainly end up with more than 20 candidate interviews to create as many informed voters as do vote on or before November 4th. Thank you.
Very much.
Hello, Henry Reese Hansen, 2 Janey Avenue. Good to see you all again. I'm surprised to be behind this mic before, I mean, 9:00 PM. It's not even eight yet. I came back tonight because last time I had made some comments of kind of following up on an AI discussion that had a couple, happened a couple of meetings ago, and I had some more information to share with the committee. I had the opportunity to speak with Mark Racine, who is the former CIO of Boston Public Schools, now runs an tech company called Root Ed, and in the interest of full disclosure, is a close personal friend of mine as well. But I got to ask him about AI practices in schools and what his recommendations are, and particularly on the mental health side of things. And what he shared is that Google offers an educational form of their Gemini AI service for free in which the school district receives a isolated instance of the AI model, which is fully searchable by administrators. And so all those processes are recorded. It also has the added benefit that Google claims, at least, that the inputs are not used to train any further models. So there's an additional privacy benefit there. Personally, I take that kind of at face value, but it is, you know, that that's going to be an issue regardless. So if that is, is something that the school district could use, that could provide that model, and then there would be oversight of how students were using the AI, and we could, you know, make sure, one, that they're using it in academically honest ways, but also for students that may be at risk, we could search for keywords that might be relevant to mental health concerns, and keep an eye out that way, and then provide relevant outreach if that were the case. So I wanted to, to share that information with the committee. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And anyone online? All right, new business.
Hey, at your next meeting, we have a guest joining us, the Food Pantry will be presenting, as they typically have done, on their programming, their progress, a lot of the positive changes they've been making as they continue to grow. You also will get an update on middle school clubs, as I mentioned. The MAS C resolutions should come before you for that meeting. And we also have a middle school student who will be recognized for the pledge, and our student reps will continue to provide those updates. So that's what's on the docket right now, and there could be other additional pieces added as well.
Fantastic. And now, Mr. Hanson has mentioned it is wild that it's not even eight o'clock right now. We will be adjourning into executive session and will not be returning to open meetings pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the FEA, van drivers, cafeteria, ESP, LPN, and secretary units, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and the chair so declares. Vote, is there a motion?
Move to enter executive session.
Second?
Second.
No discussions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you all very much.